Okay. Good evening. I would like to call our regular city council meeting back to order at 7:00 PM. At this time, I would like to ask Cody Nord from South Shores Baptist Church to come forward for the invocation, and then we will have Cub Scout Pack 774 come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we come before you tonight thankful for these men and women that have dedicated themselves to leading the city well. Would may you grant them wisdom as they seek and plan for the future. May you grant them compassion for every member of the city from the least to the greatest, and may you be with them tonight in everything that will be discussed. It's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand. Cub Scout Pack 774, color guard advance.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Those in uniform, in veteran salute. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, our nation under God, indivisible.
To. Audience, you may be seated.
And boys, stay right where you are, and we're coming on down to greet you. Okay, well, thank you very much. Wasn't that a fantastic start to our meeting? Thank you. And there's so many of you tonight. That is wonderful. We appreciate your being here and leading us in our pledge to our great country. Where are the troop leaders? Would the troop leaders like to join us down here? Are there any troop leaders here tonight? No troop leaders? Okay. The boys just organized this by themselves. See, they're earning those merit badges and learning leadership skills already. Great. Well, if you could please tell us your name, your school, and what grade you're in, and we'll start with you. And just your first name.
Hi, I'm Ivan Deme- Ivan. Hidden Hills. Fourth.
I'm Jacob. I go to Multon Elementary School, and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Radine. I go to Multon Elementary School, and I'm in second grade.
I'm Ollie. I go to Multon Elementary School, and I'm in kindergarten.
My name is Harper, and I'm in Multon Elementary School, and I'm in second grade.
I'm Taylor, and I go to Roya Vista, and I'm in third grade.
My name is Jake, and I go to Bethany Lutheran School, and I'm in grade four.
My name is Richard. I go to Mission Mosawaka School, and I'm in fourth.
I'm Alex, and I go to Multon Elementary School, and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Peyton. I go to Multon Elementary School, and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Luke, and I go to Multon Elementary School, and I'm in the fourth grade.
I'm Max, and I go to Hidden Hills Elementary School, and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Timothy. I go to Multon Elementary School, and I'm in fourth grade.
Wow. And there's so many of you tonight. Such a great showing by the Boy Scouts and the Cub Scouts, so thanks for being here. I know we have lots of parents who want to take pictures, so we'll... You know what, boys? Let's line up nice and straight. Come get closer. You stand right here. Get close here. Get close to you. Fantastic. Well, thank you for being here. Who is going to dismiss the group? Are you going to dismiss? Color guard dismissed? Okay, we have no other presentations tonight, but I thought I saw a big red box in the back. Oh, and I see one of our favorite deputies bringing holiday cheer. Sergeant Songar. Fantastic. Okay. Thank you for bringing in the box. So, we are announcing that the City of Laguna Niguel is collecting coats on behalf of Family Assistance Ministries and South County Outreach. So, we have collection bins at City Hall. We will also have them at the parade, and we'll be collecting them until December 8th, or excuse me, December 10th. And then they will be going to those agencies for those people that they serve that are in need of a little warmth. So, new or very gently used coats can be placed in the bins, and I think we have some coats already to collect. What do you say, City Council? Do we have coats? Let's go get our coats. Anyone who has a coat that they'd like to donate, go ahead and put them in the bin. So, we're going to have this bin overflowing already. But we want to let all our residents know about this collection that's taking place, and also if any of your organizations, your church groups, your service organizations, or your work, your employees would like to collect coats, please do so and have them to City Hall by December 10th. Because late in the afternoon, early evening of December 10th, we will be sorting and then sending them to those in need. And I also know a lot of our school groups and our high school students look for service projects during the holidays. So, this may be something that they'd want to join in on. So, thank you to the City Council. Thank you for city staff for starting our collection bin, and we look forward to having our whole city participate. Thank you. And let's go back up. Actually proposed by Councilmember Lynn Holm. So, it was her idea, and we all said, "What a fantastic idea." So, thank you for bringing that forward, and we all look forward to continue participating in that. But thank you. Okay, so now we are at the public communications portion of our agenda. Any person wishing to address the City Council will need to complete and present a gold-colored request-to-speak form to the city clerk. These forms are available on the counter that is located near the door to council chambers. Please be aware that there is a three-minute time limit for each person to speak. To allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker. You may have another person read your written statement. City Clerk Gomez, I have some forms here. Are there any additional?
No, Mayor, those are the only ones.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, first, for public communications, we have Bill Lieber representing the Chamber of Commerce.
Well, it's that time of year again, shop and dine Laguna Niguel, and we have a few changes this year that we think is going to make it a little bit easier and definitely better throughout the city. I got to go to my script. Shop and dine Laguna Niguel holiday campaign is from Thanksgiving to the end of the year. This year, the chamber has simplified the process by adopting the Trio Rewards app. So, you can scan your receipt instead of having to bring them into the chamber office. All you need to do is download the Trio Rewards application. If you need assistance doing that, just come into the chamber's office with your smartphone, and the chamber staff will walk you through the process. This app will also acclimate rewards for you, and you will be able to spend the rewards at participating stores. The shop and dine drawing will be held here at City Council and the meeting on the 15th at 7:00 PM. Next up is Ann Ronan from Trio to tell you how the business can benefit from the Trio Rewards program. And I'd just like to also add, I'd like to wish happy Thanksgiving to everybody here.
Thank you.
So, I have a speaker slip up there as well.
Yes, I see it.
Okay, if you don't mind, I'll follow him.
Yes, please.
It just makes sense. I am a former chairman, chairwoman of the Chamber of Commerce in San Juan Capistrano, and have a big passion for shopping local. And I recognize all the benefits that come from shopping local. Your money comes right back to community. It's spent here, goes to the nonprofits here, and it's a good program. So, I've joined Trio as a business owner, and it's a simple app. So, trio rewards dot com. I encourage everybody here to download it, try it out. But the good thing for the chamber here in Laguna... I am so impressed with the relationship between the city and the Chamber of Commerce here in Laguna Niguel. I've become a member here. It's a great economic development engine, and this is a simple app that instead of people bringing in lots of receipts and having to sign lots of pieces of paper at the chamber, they can just take their camera from their phone and scan all the receipts. A whole lot easier. We've had 5,000 people enrolled in Trio right now locally, and there are over 50 merchants with a number of them in Laguna Niguel. And there's a team of people rolling out in Laguna Niguel to encourage businesses to sign up because they will get more customers, will spend more money, and spread the word. Thank you for your time, and happy holidays.
Thank you, Ms. Ronan. And I echo the comments, as does the City Council, of what Mr. Lieber and Ms. Ronan said. Shop and dine Laguna Niguel. Not only is it great for you because you get to go to wonderful restaurants and buy great things, and our businesses benefit, you benefit, but also our city benefits too because of the sales tax revenue, and then that comes back to you in the services and amenities that we're able to provide. So, I'm appreciative of all of you who participate in that program. So, thank you for bringing our attention to that. Okay, next we have Stephen Wrotrowski. Please state your name and address for the record.
Stephen Wrotrowski, Mission Viejo. And I'd just like to first say that it was very heartwarming for me to see the Cub Scouts up here because, to me, that's one part of what America is really all about. I really enjoyed that. It was a good heartfelt moment for me. Next is that, for business purposes now, the residents on TV will remember that I pledged a couple of years ago to lower OCFA costs to them for Laguna Niguel, Liso Viejo, Dana Point, Irvine, and other cities. And I'd just like to say that the efforts have been somewhat successful, actually, I think very successful, because Irvine and Placentia voted to get out of the OCFA to save millions of dollars each year, okay? Now, a golden opportunity is being presented to your residents with the future submitted by the OCFA of its proposed Amendment Number Four, okay? For city approval, 16 members of the OCFA need to approve it. I've already spoken to Placentia and Irvine about this golden opportunity and what's presented to them. Amendment Number Four is a snowball type of amendment to lower the unfunded liability of the OCFA pension at OSERS, okay? I don't have any problem with that. None whatsoever. The next thing is that the people say, "Well, what is the golden opportunity if you agree with what's being presented?" And here it is. They... Laguna Niguel, from a 2011-12 OCFA study, was shown to be paying more than $2 million in overcharges to the OCFA. In 2017, I did a study comparing what you pay on a per-resident basis versus a contract city. Tustin, $6 million in overcharges, okay? So, contract cities are now looking into, even though, you know, we're going for another 10 years, they're looking into whether they can stay a member of the OCFA and just put out EMS services to private paramedics at a fraction of the cost of the OCFA, all right? So, what can you do, Placentia, Irvine, everybody else, all right, who are being really taken to the cleaners? Add in writing, have your city attorney add in writing one sentence to this amendment.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay, thank you. Any city can withdraw from the OCFA by giving a one-year notice of withdrawal and a 10-year lockup, which never was in effect back when we started this thing, is hereby revoked. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Bruce Page. Please state your name and address in the microphone.
Hi, my name's Bruce Page. My address is 27955 Avenida Armijo. What I'm here for today is I've been in communication with the police and code enforcement regarding leaf blowers. I had the pleasure of being woken up yet again this morning at 6:00 AM by a leaf blower, which is a little early. I can deal with this, but my son, who goes to school, really needs that extra hour of sleep, and apparently there's no ordinance for leaf blowers in Laguna Niguel. So, most of the landscapers that are in my neighborhood don't start until 7:00, 7:30, and they're really close. What I'm talking about is I live on a slope overlooking the Walgreens down on Liso Creek and La Paz, and since it's really close to my home, the sound just comes up the hill through my windows, wakes me up. Last night, I was working late on my retirement planning, and I thought, "Oh, I can sleep in because I don't have to go to work until late tomorrow," and I forgot that it was Tuesday. And so, this morning, when I was greeted at 6:15, I could hear the So, I'm hoping that maybe I can get some guidance in the direction of what we can do, perhaps, to maybe have a restriction like the other cities, like I believe Newport and Irvine and Laguna all have restrictions, if not outright bans, on gasoline-powered leaf blowers. Perhaps we could start them at 7:00 instead of 6:00. That's before dawn, winter time, and it's loud enough to wake me from a pretty decent slumber. And like I said, I don't mind, but my son, he's just turned 13, he needs that extra hour of sleep so that he can function at school, and that's 20% of his school life being interrupted by this leaf blower. And hopefully, I don't know what I need to do for... To get signatures or whatever I need to do, I would be more than glad to commit some time and effort into helping this get resolved so that it's a quieter neighborhood on school days for not just me, but also my neighbors. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, I thank you for bringing this to our attention. City Manager Ridge, I have the contact information here. I believe, though, we have a time requirement on that.
Honorable Mayor, you're correct. We do have a noise ordinance in place with time restrictions on it. I don't think we've ever taken action that completely bans gas-powered blowers. But if I may suggest that John Morgan speak to the individual at the back of the room and take down the detailed information.
Because I believe it's something like 7:00 AM, because I know I had a question about this before, and it was the shopping center that had the leaf blowers early in the morning, and the management of that center was contacted.
You're correct, with 7:00 AM.
Okay. So, John, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Okay, Bill Moorhead?
Me again. I'm Bill Moorhead, and I live in Mission Viejo at 27022 Preciado's Drive. I'm here basically to say thank you to the mayor, council, staff, and residents of Laguna Niguel, and those served by Multon Niguel Water District. I was voted as a director for the Board of Directors of Multon Niguel Water District, and I'm really excited about being able to serve the community. I've thrown a lot of effort into my profession over my... It'll be 43 years, January is 2nd, and I'm looking forward to transferring a lot of that energy from my profession to my community. I was raised in the small town of Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, and that town was a lot like Bedford Falls, if you've seen It's a Wonderful Life. People really did communicate with each other, and we knew people in town, for better or worse sometimes. But in my campaign, I got to know a lot of you people, and I got to know a lot of the residents. I did do a lot of walking of the area to get to know people, what their concerns were, and I'm very excited to be able to serve the people in this area. And I did want to thank the residents and city councils that put up with me coming too many times sometimes to their meetings to introduce myself. But I'm very proud and honored to have been selected. For those that voted for me, thank you very much, and for those that did not, I'm sure I'll do my best to earn their support and their trust. One last thing I would like to say. Some of you, well, a lot of you here have campaigned and have had sign issues. Mission Viejo has a program where you put a reef... You put a deposit down. There's a map that shows specific areas where you can put up your political signs, and if you don't put them... If you put them somewhere else, they'll take them out. You can leave them up there for the given amount of time, and then once you remove your signs, then they give you your deposit back. And it really helps those of us that have to buy signs and put signs out, and also keeps signs away from areas that are nuisance, aesthetic nuisance. So, I'd strongly recommend that cities consider some sort of program. I called Rich Lessinger from the City of Mission Viejo today. I didn't get a return call, but I'm going to volunteer him as someone you could talk with if somebody was interested in developing a sign program for campaign signs. But once again, thank you very much. I'm really looking forward to being part of Multon Niguel Water District and serving the community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moorhead, and congratulations on your election. Okay, and next we have Matt Bates. Please state your name and address into the microphone.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Matt Bates, Vice President for CityNet. We have... We're a nonprofit organization with offices at 2121 West Crescent in Anaheim. I'm here tonight to make an announcement about the 2019 Orange County Point in Time Count, which is a count of all the homeless neighbors living in Orange County, also to solicit volunteer help and support from the city to participate in the count. I'll talk more about that in a second. Just a brief word about CityNet. We're a nonprofit organization that provides homeless services on the front end of the continuum of care, meaning so we're a street outreach team that engages homeless neighbors living on the streets, unsheltered primarily, and then tries to connect them with care and housing that exists within the continuum of care with resources. Your city manager, Christine Ridge, was our contract manager up in Anaheim when we started four or five years ago. So, we're grateful for her work with us in Anaheim, and we have a long history of working together with her there. We're now contracted with most of the cities in the North Spa, and then just recently, we were awarded a grant for all the central spa cities. So, by next spring, we'll be working in about two-thirds of the cities in the county, but not down here in the south. So, that's why we're coming to all the city council meetings, just to let you know what we're doing. The Point in Time Count is mandated by HUD to be done every other year. The date for this count this year is January 23rd, 24th, and 25th of 2019, so two months from today. It's an effort to count every single homeless person in the entire county on those three days. So, we've been in the process of mapping out where homeless neighbors are living. We appreciate partnership with your local law enforcement, with the Sheriff's Department. Our teams have come down, and they've given us information about where we might look and where we might go on the days of the count. We'll create maps, and then from there, volunteers will go out on the 23rd, the 24th, and the 25th, early morning, late at night. We'll have deployment centers across the county on those days. On the 23rd, the closest ones will be at Family Assistance Ministries down in San Clemente and at Families Ford in Irvine, South Irvine. So, volunteers from Laguna Niguel would travel to those places, would meet there. We have online training that they can sign up for, and if they're team captains, there'll be some in-person trainings. So, we need volunteers. So we need volunteers, and we hope that people will come out to volunteer. I've got flyers, I've left some with your City Manager. We've got more if you want us to send them. I know that you've got a homeless task force and faith communities, any place that you would distribute these. There's also a website that I'll mention for the record, which is www.Everyonecountsoc.org. So everyonecountsoc.org, you can go there for information and then certainly to sign up. Thank you for your time. Well, also, final thought, we'll be doing a city count for all the cities. This year, different than past years, we're using GIS technology, so all the surveys will be done on phones, smartphones or tablets, which will drop a PIN location to where that interaction took place. So we'll come back to you after the count with a Laguna Niguel-specific data, what we encountered during the count here in the city. So just want to let you know that, and we look forward to coming back and talking that through with you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the information. Appreciate it. Okay, City Clerk Gomez, are there any additional requests to speak?
No, Mayor, that was the last one.
Okay, so Public Communications is now closed. We will move on to our consent calendar, items 1 through 10. Are there any items that need to be polled for comment or discussion? Councilmember Lindholm?
None.
Are you pro-10?
I was going to pull 7 and 10, just for a quick comment.
Okay, so Mayor Pro Tem Jennings has polled items number 7 and number 10. Is there a motion to approve the balance?
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Councilmember Davy, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, approved. Okay, item number 7. Item number 7 is the Award of a Construction Contract for Laguna Niguel Skate Park and Soccer Field Synthetic Turf Replacement.
Yeah, I just wanted to provide a comment. Thank you, Mayor. The city spends a tremendous amount of money on synthetic fields. We have some of the best sports fields in the nation. We do this because it's right for our residents, we do this because it's right for our businesses, because when we support tournaments and other things, we get a tremendous amount of traffic, and that drives economic interest in our city, and it's a great thing. Just to let the council know, and they probably do know, that this originates out of Parks and Rec. It goes through the Sports Advisory Committee, I'm a liaison to that. They consider what's needed. There is a schedule that comes with it, and then it goes to Parks and Rec, and then it comes to us for approval. The numbers are very high. We are told that the life of these can be around 10 years, and with proper maintenance, they can go much, much further. So we spend these with the hopes that, one, it will reduce injuries and help our sports and athletes, but we also do that to help and beautify our city. So I just wanted to point that out, because it is one of the larger expenses that we do in Parks and Rec, and we do that at the exclusion of some other things. But this is so important, and it really makes a tremendous difference in our parks. So with that, I'd move item number 7.
Okay, item number 7 has been moved by Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lindholm. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, carries. Okay, item number 10, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Item number 10 is to reclassify one of our employees to a Public Works Inspector position. And I just wanted to note that the council historically has been very financially conservative and endeavored to keep the census of employees as low as possible. And that's true for not only their salaries, because it's a budget item, but also the pension obligations that come with that. So we're very mindful of that. And I just wanted to provide some kudos to not only the City Manager and staff, but also to Public Works Director for finding this position, for finding an opening in that position, and doing something internally, which sort of just moves a person around, which helps us with that. I think it's a very, very smart move. It's a good financial move, and all those slight increase in compensation, which I'm not concerned about. It did save us from going out into the marketplace and incurring additional costs, and I think it's the right way to go, and I just wanted to applaud that. So with that, I would move item number 10.
Okay, and I'd also like to add, though, with that slight increase, there's also significant savings to the city in how those services were previously provided to us under another contract. So in the long run, it is actually saving us money, which is always good. So moved by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by myself. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Okay, we are now on to City Manager, item number 1. City Manager Ridge?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, this item before you is the adoption of a resolution showing support for the recently enacted county's Addiction Treatment and Recovery Business Registration Ordinance. This ordinance was enacted by the county in coordination with the Orange County District Attorney's Office to better provide accountability within the sober living home industry. Specifically, the ordinance requires drug and alcohol treatment programs to disclose their ownership interest in affiliated entities and reveal potential conflicts of interest by registering annually with the Orange County Healthcare Agency. It provides one more additional oversight tool, which is very consistent with the city's very own ordinance, which you passed back in June of 2018. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I know our city council has been very engaged in the issue of sober living homes, working on legislation and working on our own ordinance here, which is very comprehensive. I think the one that we did pass really addressed the needs of our neighborhoods and the needs of the people in the homes. This here, the county now, is following on and looking at the business aspect of it. So I think this resolution is, you know, is in accordance with what we have been supporting and what we have been advocating for. So is there any questions, comments, or a motion to approve?
Just a comment, if I may. I'm really grateful to see the county stepping up and doing this. It definitely helps the local cities have a little bit more support. And it's important that we know where these facilities are, so that, you know, the number one thing is its safety, it's safety for the residents, and safety for those that are in these facilities. So I'm glad to see this, and I know that we're still working in legislation, whether it's state or federal, to give local control a bit more accountability and control on where these homes are, you know, being put. So this is a good start, at least with the county bringing this in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, I think this is one more step in bringing this industry to heel. They have done significant damage in our community. We've had many, many meetings talking about that, and the wrongful implementation of these is just something that our city is unwilling to tolerate. I commend the county for doing that. I think the public is rightful to distrust this, some of these efforts. Having said that, we want to provide all the compassion we can as part of this, and the registration of these and sort of the rest of the information, I think is going to be inordinately helpful for us to keep track of this industry in our city, which has otherwise been very elusive to do and has gone at great expense to try to do in the past. And this is one more step in trying to stop that. So thanks to that, it does have my support.
Thank you. So can I have a motion to approve the Registry Ordinance Resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Councilmember Davy. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Our next item is Public Works Item Number 1, and that is the approval of the new solid waste franchise agreement with CRNR. Public Works Director Scott, can you please provide us with a staff report?
Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, the Public Works Department is pleased to present a proposed new agreement and extension to the CRNR Municipal Solid Waste Collection Services Contract. Here with us this evening is staff from Economics, the professional consulting firm that has assisted the city in its negotiations with CRNR. William O'Toole, President and Founder of Economics, will be giving a brief presentation highlighting the terms of the proposed agreement. William has been a recognized leader in municipal waste field since 1976 and an early promoter of recycling. Along with William, Serene St. John and Trevor Blythe of Economics are here in the audience. Serene provided legal support services, and Trevor was responsible for rate modeling and the drafting of this agreement. At the conclusion of their presentation, they'll be available to answer questions, along with Ziad Masboudi, the city's Engineering Services Manager, who will oversee implementation and compliance. I'd also like to add that Dean Ruffridge, Senior Vice President of CRNR, has joined us for this evening's discussion. With that, I'd like to call William O'Toole up to the microphone so he can give his presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name is William O'Toole, and as the Public Works Director, I'm the founder, President of Economics. For the record, our corporate is 832 Camino Del Mar in Del Mar, California, and we have offices in Esplenda and San Juan Capistrano. And I just got a quick briefing that if I press the right button, it should advance the screen, and it did. A background on how we're here tonight. It was in late 2015. Economics was hired by the city to assist in reaching compliance with state laws as administered by CalRecycle. Our first task was an assessment of what was available to your residents and your businesses and restaurants on the recycling programs. After that assessment, it was in order to comply with CalRecycle's directions to the city. A program expansion was designed in 2016. We entered into negotiations with CRNR to amend your existing solid waste franchise agreement to implement those required programs. We came before you in July 16 of 2016 to approve an amendment to the franchise agreement, and it was an interim step to achieve compliance with the existing state laws at the time of 2016. That amendment included a rate freeze and a provision that the existing evergreen franchise would terminate on December 31, 2017, unless we needed more time to finish the negotiation, and we did. The provision of that amendment was if additional time beyond December 31, 2017 is needed to complete the negotiations, then the existing amendment terminates upon the conclusion of the negotiation and the signing of the new solid waste franchise agreement. We are at that point where the negotiation has concluded, and hopefully, we'll have a signed agreement when we're done with tonight. We've changed the agreement from an evergreen to you now have a solid waste franchise agreement that is a fixed 10-year term, with the opportunity for CRNR to earn two one-year extensions for meeting implementation performance requirements, meaning they need to put in the programs that CalRecycle is mandating for the city. The new solid waste franchise agreement, as such, incorporates all the terms, provisions, and requirements for full compliance. We'll go in later in this presentation on details of the four main laws that your amendment, or rather, your new franchise agreement, needs to be able to comply with. There is four since 2011 that were the key laws. 341 required all your businesses to have a recycling program. It wasn't just your businesses, it was all the businesses in California. AB 1826 mandated restaurants to recycle their food scraps. 1594 removed the definition of yard trimmings and defined it as solid waste. The upshot of that is that it no longer counts as recycling when it's taken to a landfill. 1383 was the last major piece of legislation. It's comprehensive, and it literally impacts all residences and all businesses. It has very explicit enforcement provisions, and there's very prescriptive details for program implementation and reporting, and we'll cover those in a few slides. This is sort of the visual graphic that takes us through the timeline. On my left, on the left of your presentation, you have AB 939. That was the original law. It required 50% diversion by 2000, and that is where the basis of your old franchise started, which was 18 years ago, and it hadn't been changed up to 2016. 341 had mandatory commercial recycling. 1826, restaurants for food scraps. 1594 was the law that took the yard trimmings and said they would no longer count by 2020. And then finally, 1383, which required all organics to be diverted, and it had a goal of 2020, 50% reduction and 75% by 2025, and also a 20% recovery of edible food scrap. Your existing rates under the new franchise will remain in effect from January 1, 2019 through June 30, 2019. That gives you an effective rate freeze of about three and a half to four years, depending on where you start the counting. The agreement continues the city policy of applying a 5% franchise fee. It's paid monthly based on gross revenues. Within the franchise, there's a cost structure that provides recycling incentives to businesses and propping managers, as their participation in the recycling programs is not only necessary but critical to achieve the state compliance requirements. Collection days will remain the same. CRNR continues as your city's service provider. You have, as a city, now gained the contractual ability to direct CRNR, your awler, on the pace and the types of the required mandated recycling program implementation. It gives you the control of implementing costs. The specifics are all in the 150 pages plus of the franchise agreement contract. The franchise contains provisions for extensive monitoring and reporting that CRNR will have to give to you. Because of those reports, I need it to verify the program implementation to the state agency, CalRecycle. Implementation of a food scrap recycling program for all residents and businesses is needed to comply with SB 1383. CRNR will be providing six new collection vehicles by October 2019. Additional vehicles will be added to maintain the fleet with an average age of five years or less. Residential carts will be replaced with carts conforming to the state mandated scheme of black for solid waste, blue for recyclables, green for yard trimmings, and that needs to be accomplished in the contract no later than January 1, 2022. CRNR will provide two full-time recycling coordinators dedicated to Laguna Niguel specifically to provide residents and businesses with complimentary assistance on implementation and the operation of the recycling programs. One of those recycling coordinators is here this evening, Carla from CRNR. She's been working out there very hard for the last year and a half. What's the cost of the compliance? A one-time 3% increase applied to the overall rate base, that means everything, commercial, businesses, multifamily, roll-off. 3% increase applied to the overall rate base on July 1, 2019. A one-time increase of $2.45 per household per month when the city is mandated to implement the residential food scrap recycling by law that's in 2022. And thereafter, any rate increases are provided annually based on the change in the Department of Labor's Producer Price Index. That's similar to CPI, except it's more of a good proxy for an operation. And the other is the County of Orange operates the landfills, and they usually kick it up a couple of percent, which translates to about a nickel for every household. Because it does deal with rates, you have a Proposition 218 process that you'll be needing to go through. Staff will be returning in spring, guarding the mailing of the Prop. 218 notice to all the customers and property owners within the city. The notice will include the recommended one-time 3% increase of the overall rate base plus the PPI. The notice will be structured as a five-year notice, so you don't have to keep doing this every year. It'll be structured as a five-year notice, and will include a description of that one-time increase of 245 per household. And then thereafter, for the remaining four years of the notice, any rate increases are provided annually based on the change of the Department provided annually based on the change of the Department of Labor's Producer Price Index plus any increase by the County of Orange on their landfill tip fee. We're now at the comments and discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Toole. I have a couple of questions, and I know I went through, I read this entire contract and all the attachments very thorough. I am impressed with the thoroughness of it, the age of the trucks, the cleanliness of the trucks, the courteous interaction between our residents and any staff with the trash collection, what the expectations are, many, many things in this contract. And I did have all my questions answered by staff except for a couple, but one of them is, and in your presentation, you bring up a second question. In here, it refers to the co-collection of residential yard trimmings and food scraps. Is that something different than what you've referred to as the implementation of the residential food scrap recycling?
No.
Or the one in the same?
They're one in the same.
And when do you anticipate that starting for our city?
You have to have it in place by January 1, 2022. To get it in place, it could take a good six months, nine months, so you could back that up to January 1, 2021. You'd really need to get it rolling in order to be in compliance.
Okay, and then, so that bin would then replace or be used as that bin instead of just the residential yard trimmings?
Correct. The residential yard trimming container cart would have food scraps tossed into it. So instead of having an additional cart, which you could do, but it would probably be really difficult to do, you would just have the green waste cart turns into a food scrap cart with, co-collected with the green waste.
Okay, so then the food scraps would go in that rather than in the garbage or trash?
Correct.
Okay, very good. That is all that I have right now. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Councilmember Lindholm?
Yes, thank you. I know CRNR's done a great job in the city. My questions to you deal with, I see all the laws that we're going to have to be complying with and those changes. Why specifically do we need a 10-year contract? I am never a proponent of locking our council in. In fact, that would be locking council members, even if they serve two terms, two four-year terms, that's eight years. This is a 10-year contract with two years' extension. Will you tell me the benefits of that and why I should be voting for something like that?
The benefit is that you have a period of turmoil coming up above in the next 10 years of different programs being implemented. We normally recommend a seven-year contract. The other component is you want a hammer, literally, over your hauler, which is where those two one-year incentives come in. You also, in the contract, have the ability to get rid of them at any point if they're not performing. So if you have trouble with the state in compliance, they go away, and there's multiple sections. Serene St. John is the one that helped write all that, but we wrote in sections so that you're not locked into a bad performer.
Okay, that was my question, and it's stated very early in the staff report where it says, and I have had no complaints with the service they've provided. I'm just always concerned when we lock in a contract. And it says here, the new solid waste agreement requires CRNR to implement all state required programs and to meet all the other new state mandates for diversion and recycling. So that would include any new regulations over the next 10 years?
That is correct.
And then you just briefly said that there was an option if they were not performing, which I have not seen, but if they are not performing, then we've, the evergreen has been written out, and this is more of a performance-based, and the incentive has to deal with the 3% increase in the 245 that's going to cover expenses. Talk to me about that.
The incentive isn't time. There's two things a hauling company wants, time and/or money. This contract incentivizes with time. You do the right thing, you get more time in the city to operate. As a quasi-government regulated monopoly, which is really what most hauling companies are, how long they're going to be here is a good question, and we feel that we were able to do in the negotiation the best job we could to get you to a place where you can get rid of them. They've agreed to some pretty harsh terms in that franchise agreement that you have the power to get rid of them.
Okay, so for me, it's a performance contract, which I've always liked performance-based contracts. And my final question to you, Mr. O'Toole, correct?
Yes.
Is, do you represent the city or are you a negotiator between the city and CRNR? Who do you represent?
The city.
All right, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Hey, thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. One is, this was inordinately comprehensive, so it was a very interesting read over the weekend, so thank you very much for that. You know, CRNR does a great job. We've been receiving quality service from them for a long time. We get a different level of service, I understand, than other cities. We have the ability to have tree pickup, large item pickup, and some other things, so we are paying and have been paying a fair but a premium price for premium services, and I think that's reflected in the type of services we've been receiving. So I have a very strong thank you for CRNR. I guess I should also be thanking Sacramento for the unfunded mandate of all the extras that we have to do, but that's an argument for another day. But I am interested in the compliance aspects of it. I think those are handled financially very well. We have endeavored over the last year or so to get every evergreen contract that we might encounter as a city out of our city so that we don't have to encounter those anymore. It's, I think it's a bad policy. It was never a good policy, and I believe this may be one of the last, if not the last, that we're having to deal with. So I think the, I had the same concerns about the term, and I appreciate your comments on it. I think I'm, my comfort level is okay with it. So with that, I, you know, I think I'm going to go ahead and support this, and I appreciate all the work that went into it. I know it was a very, very long process, so I appreciate all the staff, CRNR, and your services, Mr. O'Toole. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Davies?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to start off by saying, we've always had fantastic service. The professionalism with CRNR has been, you know, to the top, so I'm grateful for that. I did have a question kind of piggybacking on the regulations. As we can see, Sacramento always has time to do regulations on the local cities and make sure that we're paying for them as well. So I'm sure with the supermajority, there'll probably be more coming down the line. My question with that is, the contract and what we're spending, if there are more regulations coming down, is that within the cost that we're being billed, or would that be considered in the inflation that would go up if there was more work to do?
Your franchise agreement has a very structured approach to cost. If you had something really outrageous, but there really isn't much left to take out or recycle, but if you did have something extraordinarily outrageous, you do have a contract section by which you would negotiate with CRNR. They'd have to give you costs. You would evaluate those costs. City manager has the ability to say, "We don't like your costs. Do them again." That's about as strong as you can get legally. You can't force somebody into doing something that's bad for business. You lose on the court that way, but you've got a very clear process by which you can address costs.
Okay, good. Yeah, I'm sure there'll be some more regulations coming down the line, but that's good to know that we would have a chance to negotiate on those. Also, I'm really grateful to see that you were able to pull out the evergreen clause. That's huge. I know it's something, again, we've all been working on, and I'm good. You know, I look at the pricing, I know when I was speaking with our city manager, when you look at what we're paying, and again, our city actually has extra amenities that you offer that a lot of the cities don't, but we're still coming in, I believe, middle-range compared to other cities when it comes to what we're paying for the cost, but we're actually getting more for it. At least that's the way I feel, so I thank you for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Minagor?
CRNR has done a very good job for our city, and I don't have any issues at all with the company. The 10-year contract term is the one that surprised me because I do review a lot of contracts for a lot of different municipalities, and based on your corporate experience that you've been pursuing the same type of negotiations with other municipalities in Southern California, then what I would like to know that you said the average agreement term is seven years. Typically, when I look at a lot of different contracts, it's either five years or two five years, and this one is 10. So where do we stand? I know the raise, I've talked to the city manager in great lengths with regard to, this is the best agreement for our city. I acknowledge that, and I support that, but just I wanted to get that clarification or maybe amplification on the difference between two five-year contract terms versus 10-year, or then what you said, seven-year, which is normal.
In the context of the negotiation, I'm sure several of you have been in them, you come out with the best outcome, you come for the lowest price. CRNR, I would say their major concession was the purchase of the five new, or six new additional trucks, and they also, the commitment of putting in a very specifically designed lightweight recycling truck that saved you about $138,000. From that basis and their commitment to do all of the programs that the state has mandated is what I grudgingly went from seven, eight, and I said, okay, 10, to performance-based. So it was a negotiated item, and in the balance of it, the 10 years plus the two gives you what you need. We just went through an RFP process in Tustin. Two firms responded. One of them was CRNR, and one of them was Waste Management. There were contract exceptions in the form of that RFP. It said, "If there's anything in this agreement you don't like, let us know. Submit it as a form." We had over 20 from one. CRNR was the only company that said, "No exceptions." So their commitment to do the job won them that extra couple of years in the negotiation with you. That would be a summary argument.
Very good. Thank you.
I support the action.
Okay, thank you. Now, we have received very good service from CRNR over the years, and I want our taxpayers to be sure to know that the city hired Economics to assist us in this contract negotiation to make sure that we're in compliance with state laws as they progress throughout the coming years, and we are required to meet certain recycling quotas. And this has been to the taxpayer's benefit. One, I think a huge benefit of it is it's no longer an evergreen contract, so that's tremendous benefit to our residents. So I want the residents to be sure to know that this is why we hire a company such as Economics to work with us on the negotiation of something so complex. So thank you, Mr. O'Toole, for your presentation. And are there any other additional questions? Councilmember Lindholm?
Yes, thank you. You said if the performance, and as I said, we've never had a problem with performance with CRNR. How would notification, I assume that's like if we don't meet the food scrap recycling? When you talk about performance, what do you really mean by performance, and is that like a one-year notification or a three-year notification? What is the standard for that?
The performance that you have in your agreement is actually granular, to use my MBA terms. I don't have it. Trevor does, and he uses this term all the time. Granular comes out, meaning you meet once a month. Your city staff will be meeting with CRNR once a month. They have to report on a pretty extensive form, many multi-pages of spreadsheets, what they've done in the field that month, where they are with all the program implementation. You would know on a month-to-month basis if it was starting to drift sideways.
Okay, I thank you for that. I think that's very helpful for the council to know, especially because of the tenure.
Yes.
Yeah, that squeaks a little bit for me, but thank you.
It squeaks for me, too.
Thank you for that answer. Yeah.
Okay, any additional questions? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve staff recommendations A and B?
No move.
Moved by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, so that concludes our discussion items, so we will move on to other business and council reports. I have on the agenda Economic Development Committee, but I don't believe we had a meeting. We did not, okay. So council reports, who would like to go first? Councilmember Davies?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. First of all, I want to thank OCFA and the diligent work that they've been doing with the fires. You know, our prayers are with you. It's extremely tough. I know that a lot of our firefighters are at other places trying to help out, so, you know, please let them know that we're very grateful for that. Also, I want to, I think most of you have congratulated me, and I appreciate it. I was elected as the ACCO C president, which I think I'll be starting next year, so I'm excited to be representing Orange County, and what that is, is a, it's an agency that represents the cities in Orange County, especially when it comes to local control. So looking to make sure that we don't have a lot of regulations like we just looked at, or at least hopefully holding back a little bit. But if there's any questions anyone may have with an issue, please let me know. And let's see here, of course, I know this is kind of a fond farewell to Councilmember Linda Lindholm, and I had the privilege of being in council with her. She basically was my mentor for quite some time, and the fact that we got to have her back for a year was really an honor. I can't thank you enough. I mean, for those of you that may not know, she was mayor four times in this city, so she knows it well. If it wasn't for her, we wouldn't have the Crown Valley Park as it is right now. She's really given a lot to this community, and the fact that you stepped up and took in that one year, we really needed to have that, so I can't tell you how blessed we are, so I want to thank you for that, as well as the support that everyone's giving me through the death of my brother, so thank you.
Councilman Minagor?
I wanted to echo the same thing. I wanted to, I enjoyed working with Councilmember Linda Lindholm. It was a great year. You brought a lot of knowledge, a lot of class, and a lot of experience to the table, so we appreciate that. And my personal condolences to Councilmember Lori Davies for the loss of your brother. No other reports.
Okay. Councilmember Lindholm?
She said no crying.
You know, and we, you know, we're doing something down in the well a little later, so if you want to save your comments...
I can save my comments.
You know which comments I mean.
Oh, okay.
The ones where you'll cry.
Oh, no, there's no crying in baseball. Thank you, councilmembers. Oh, I will say something that is not relevant to my leaving, and that is, we're all aware of the fires that were in Malibu and up north, and I believe that we have our police services and OCFA looking at some sites within the city, and I am really hopeful we get them on the agenda or however they need to be done so that those sites can be cleared ASAP. There were too many deaths that occurred up north. I don't think we have that kind of problem here, but we do have some hillsides that could use some attention, and I think our city manager and our staff could direct that these, the properties are better taken care of and the trees are trimmed so that our city is even safer. So I will leave you with that comment.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Great, thank you very much, Mayor. I echo the sentiments, and thank you to all the firefighters, OCFA, CalFire, and all those who've been giving their lives and those who have lost their lives fighting these fires. It's extraordinary that we have this to deal with, but they've dealt with it in ways that we can only imagine, and a true heartfelt appreciation for that. You know, we're on the heave of Thanksgiving, and I wanted to say at least one of the things I'm thankful for, and that's for the city staff, for my colleagues here. It is a true pleasure to serve on this council. a true pleasure to serve on this council, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve the residents of Laguna Niguel. It is a true privilege. As I close tonight, I wanted to share a true heartfelt congratulations to my colleagues, Mayor Genaway and Councilmember and former Mayor Fred Miniger, for their respective re-elections to this council. That is a very big deal, and I'm very proud of you. I also wish to congratulate Sandy Rains on her election to this council as well. I look forward, as always, to serving alongside each of you as we do the people's work here in Laguna Niguel. And I pledge all that I have to ensure that each of your visions for our great city are met by me with both cooperation and genuine support. And to my great friend and colleague Linda Lindholm, as she is leaving the council tonight, I have to say, well done, best wishes, and if we could create a legacy of public servants in your example, I think we would be all very well served. You've been a leader, you've been a great mentor to me, and as always, a wonderful friend. So thank you very much, and I mean that. It is and must always be a solemn and humbling duty to represent others as they represent you and their government. It's for that reason that I chose to take this opportunity tonight to, following our recent elections, to renew my personal commitment of service to our residents, and I call upon my colleagues and all of our many constituents to look up and to look forward in this changing landscape of our political life here in Orange County. While many of the faces have changed and will be changing, and the agendas of those who are new to the scene may seem foreign to some of us, the calling set before our newly-elected leaders here in Orange County will remain the same, and that is to do all they can, indeed all that all of us can, to ensure that the public's trust in our efforts remains strong, while we set about doing the public's business in a compassionate, cooperative, and compelling way in the full light of the public's watchful eye. Regardless of party, regardless of position, and regardless of the margin of their victories, I ask only that all of those who've been elected to public office here in Orange County lay down the angst and animus that so often rises in the fullest measure during elections, and now turn to leading through service as we work together to develop meaningful and lasting solutions to the needs of our community, while promoting, of course, fairness, cooperation, and collaboration. For all of this, you have my unwavering commitment, and I invite all of those elected public officers here in Orange County, in California, in our great nation, and indeed beyond, to join us here in Laguna Niguel, who I think do it right, in what I might call a new era of public service, one that is free from the torture binds of angst, and one that is dedicated purposefully and intentionally to improving the lives of our people, to preserving their abundant liberties, and as always, ensuring that each of us is emboldened by the support of our government in our ever, in our never-ending quest for the pursuit of our own happiness. That would truly be remarkable. Mayor, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Very well said. Hey, well, Fire Chief Contreras, please convey to all the firefighters the deep appreciation that the city council and all of our residents have for what they do, and Chief McDaniel to the deputies as well. We hold our first responders in very high esteem, and hold them very close to our hearts, and greatly appreciate all that they do and the support that their families give them. It's been a busy month since our last city council meeting. A few of the things that I've done with City Manager Ridge, we attended the South Orange County Mayor's Association meeting. I know it seemed like it was forever ago, but it's been since our last meeting. And there we spoke with County CEO Frank Kim, and also Sheriff-elect Don Barnes regarding the homeless issue and what is being done, and I've asked them about providing county services to the homeless in our area. So that is an ongoing dialogue, but they know the concerns of Laguna Niguel. Also met with a few members of our youth committee. This is also a continuing dialogue I've been having with them on developing a Live Clean campaign for our teens in our city. This is something that needs to be initiated by the teens, and so they did some very good work on that, and I think are laying out a good program that their peers will be responding to. Met with, here in council chambers, a group of third graders from McDowell Elementary. They wanted to learn about city government, so we start them young and plant that seed for public service, and also presented a flag, a city flag to Boy Scout Troop 773. Last Friday, the city council rece, or the city of Laguna Niguel received an award from the Laguna Niguel Chamber of Commerce as the outstanding corporate sponsor for the year. So that was a true honor for the city, and we value our partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. We had, at the end of October, on the 27th, the Laguna Niguel Military Support Committee had their annual fundraiser, and it was so successful. It was a tribute to our military, and the committee worked so well together. We had a lot of support from the community. It was a fun event. We had the commanding officers from two of our adopted units speak, and they raised over $50,000. And this will go towards supporting our three adopted units. Our Military Support Committee also has another toy drive coming up, so please be generous and have fun buying Christmas toys for kids, and that will be December 1st at Walmart. And then, coming up, we have on Friday, November 30th, the final Meet the Mayor Leadership Breakfast for the year. So invited to that are the presidents and board members of our city service organizations and nonprofits, as well as the council members. So I hope that you're able to attend, and there's been great collaboration with our organizations, a lot of synergy created this year. So we will be analyzing what we have done and seeing how we can continue to work together. I wish all of you a very happy Thanksgiving with your families. Enjoy them, enjoy your time with them, and we're just all so thankful to be living in this remarkable city with this remarkable residents. And that's all that I have for now, so now we'll go on to staff reports. Do you like to start, Chief?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Certainly, it's a celebration time and a time to catch up with family and friends, but I would ask that any folks who are planning to include alcohol in that, they make some plan for their transportation home before they even start, whether that be a ride service, a family member, or a designated driver. Unfortunately, we see way too many times on Thanksgiving that that isn't always the case, so I would just ask people to do that responsibly before they even start their celebrations. Our folks will be here in full force, both day and night on Thanksgiving, and with that, I'd like to thank El Niguel Country Club, who has, is donating two turkey dinners for us, for our guys while they're here, both in the, for day shift and evening shift. So very nice of those folks, and I will be here celebrating with them, so thank you.
Director Erlinson.
Just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. City Attorney Dixon. Okay. That's a good line for tonight, huh? Fire Chief Contreras.
I'd just, first of all, like to thank the council for your kind words. I don't know if you heard, we did have 60 firefighters requested to go up to Butte, so up there where that big fire was. They'll be away from their families, but, you know, the need to serve and the call to serve is deep, so they will be up there. Also, I'd like to say we've started our Spark of Love toy drive, and that will be at every fire station. Residents can come and drop off a toy unwrapped between now and December 24th. So that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Masbooty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick update on Crown Valley Park Community Center project. It's going pretty smooth, and hopefully in the next two weeks, we'll have our slab poured, so it's starting to look like a, like a building is going to start going up. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan.
Just piggybacking on everyone else, want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thanks.
Thank you. City Clerk Gomez.
I want to do the same, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and I just want to say, Linda Lindholm, it's really been a pleasure to serve with you while you were back this time, and you were one of the first councilmembers that I met when I first came on board, and I hope I get to see you for many, many years to come.
Director Giglio.
Thank you, Mayor. Wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving as well. And right when you get back from Thanksgiving, we're going to shove holiday cheer at all of you. So check the rec brochure that was mailed out pretty recently. We have Letters to Santa going right now. The Christmas tree lighting is on Saturday, December 1st, from 5:00 to 7:00 here at City Hall. Hanukkah Wonderland and menorah lighting is on Sunday, December 2nd, at 4:00 PM here at City Hall. We have a holiday lights decorating contest. We're always looking for more people to enter that. It's a really fun activity for all of our residents to drive around and see all the homes decorated, and we will cap it off with the Holiday Parade on Saturday, December 8th at 10:00 AM on Crown Valley Parkway. So just check out the rec brochure for all that information. Councilmember Lindholm, thank you so much for your service. I have a feeling we haven't seen the last of you, though. So we look forward to seeing you at our grand opening of our new building. Thank you.
And please tell your staff thank you in advance, because we know it's a very busy season for them, but they do provide a lot of holiday cheer for all of our residents, and while we're all enjoying it, we know they're busy working and maybe away from their families during some of that, so please thank them from us. Deputy City Manager Bell.
Happy Thanksgiving, and I just wanted to give you a brief update. We've been doing great on our coat collection. We have filled up the bin already more than four times, so depending on how tonight went, it might have been number five, but we are interested to clean out everybody's coat closets. So while we've been doing a great job, we're looking forward to receiving a lot more. Just to remind everybody, there will be collection bins at the Holiday Parade, and they're always in City Hall, 8:00 to 5:00, on each of the days that City Hall is open. Thank you.
I'd also like to note that one of the first coats that went in the bin was from a junior high, or, excuse me, middle school. I'm dating myself, junior high. One of the middle school students at our Junior Civic Workshop last week came and donated a coat, so, and that was very meaningful for him to actually place the coat in there. So thank you. Director Scott.
Just a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Okay, City Manager Ridge.
Hey, Honorable Mayor, I just have two items. The first one is really an announcement to let concerned residents know that we have received the final technical report from HMMH. That's the consultant that we engage to conduct short-term noise monitoring relative to jet noise, and I'm planning to present the report at a public workshop scheduled on December 18th prior to the city council meeting. It will provide interested parties the opportunity to hear the report findings and ask questions of the technical expert who will be on hand. We will provide for robust notification of the public workshop, and we will make the report publicly available as well. And the second item has to do with something that Councilmember Lindholm brought up. In light of the fire tragedy that has occurred throughout our state, we have identified five higher-risk areas within our city, and we've already formed a cross-departmental team from Public Works, Community Development, Police Services, and OCFA, and they will be addressing in the immediate future those areas and what mitigation we can implement. And then lastly, I would like to say it's been a pleasure working for you, Councilmember Lindholm. Your wise counsel over the past year, I have greatly appreciated, and I still have your phone number.
We all have your phone number. Okay, so that concludes our business and council reports. This evening, we do have a special presentation to Councilmember Linda Lindholm, so at this time, if the council could please join me down on the floor. Well, I think the public can tell by the words that were already said that it is bittersweet that we say goodbye to you. You really stepped up when there was a need to fill that fifth seat on the council, and it is important to have that fifth seat filled. You've added another perspective, and with your experience, as has been served for 16 years in the past, number one, it's amazing that you would want to come back, but number two, it really is, you've lent a perspective to us, and it's always good for us. We make better decisions when we have more input as a council as a whole, and it's okay to disagree, and then we, not that we have, but it is okay, but then when we come together and make a decision, that decision is made by the council as a whole. So you have really shown your commitment to the community, and I want to, and I've said this before, and I will keep saying it, it's Councilmember Lindholm's vision that is why Mr. Masbooty was talking about what's going on at Crown Valley Park. It was, you persevered on that vision that our city deserved a much updated, newer, grander community park, and that has become a reality because of your perseverance. So that is your thumbprint on the city. We will never forget that. We are forever grateful, and we are grateful for your coming to the city's aid, being that fifth seat, providing us with your perspective. So thank you very much. On behalf of the city council, present this to Councilmember Lindholm, and also for your commitment to our community, I present you with the Mayor's Challenge Coin.
I just, it was great to be back. I love this city. And each of your councilmembers, Mayor Protem, John Mark Jennings, you have heart and soul. Fred Miniger, you know everything about traffic for this great city. I love that when you say that. Lori Davies is a hard worker. She's always out there, and congratulations again on being president of ACCOC. That's quite an impressive thing. Madam Mayor, you've always been kind and gracious and a good leader, and I appreciate that. But the first thing I always care about is the safety of the city. That's always been my priority. I thank our police chief. I thank our fire department. You're the reason I can go to bed at night. You're the reason our children go to bed at night safe. You're who we pick up the phone for if we have to call 911. You're always there. I am very eternally grateful to you for that. That's a top priority. The rest of it is icing on the cake. We have, and I do believe we have, the most exceptional city staff. Allison, I've watched you for years. About time you became Department Director. Eileen, it was welcome. Welcome to you. We have a great planning department, finance. Our new city manager is doing a terrific job. Terry, I've known you since the beginning. It's a very, very good city, and the reason for that is the care of the staff. You are the face. You honestly are the face of the city. We're kind of behind the scenes. Very grateful to all of you. Grateful to you for this time. Thanks for having me here. I'm out of your hair. I'm going to, I'm going to take my plaque now.
For now. For now. I can take this. This is mine. I'm going to take my shirt. Whoa, I got it. Oh, it's just a piece of paper. There you go. Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. Return to the dais.
Yes, thank you. Oh, I'll put the plastic.
I would like to close tonight's city council meeting in memory of Rick Davies, beloved brother to Councilmember Lori Davies, and also in memory of Noah Finnegan. Noah was a 19-year-old resident of Laguna Niguel, a student at Elise Niguel High School. Noah was also an organ donor to eight recipients. The Finnegan family requested that the statement that was read on behalf of Noah's loved ones prior to beginning surgery in the operating room be read tonight on their behalf. This is our child, Noah Richard Finnegan. Noah was an amazing young man of many gifts, a talented musician, an outstanding athlete, a poetic songwriter, a moving singer, a great brother, a kind and tender boyfriend, and a caring and insightful friend. All who met him felt welcomed and appreciated. All who met him felt welcomed and appreciated for their own uniqueness. Noah lived his life on his own terms and with passion, and he was so funny. Noah was exceptional. He was faith-filled and a saved child of God. On behalf of the Laguna Niguel City Council, we extend our deepest and heartfelt sympathy to the Davies and Finnegan families. We are now adjourned at 8:27 PM. Thank you, and have a good evening.